Yes, please.
Okay, so from my office, I have Ronit Rubin, who will be presenting the FY24 capital budget, debt service budget, and the Baltimore County Public Schools capital budget.
Chris, before we get started, were you able to get in touch with Councilman Young?
I reached out to his office. I'm going to try his cell. I reached out to him, but I also sent him a message. So I'm waiting for him to respond.
Lauren, why don't we get started?
Okay, Ronit, you can give us an overview of the capital budgets.
Will do. Good afternoon. The capital debt service and Baltimore County Public Schools capital budget package is divided into three sections. Section A is a summary of the fiscal year 2024 capital budget and county debt and debt service. Section B contains related topics for discussion. And section C is the BCPS capital budget analysis, which contains topics for discussion specific to BCPS. Turning to section A, the proposed FY2024 capital budget for consolidated public improvements, also known as CPI, which is the non-metro district portion of the capital budget. That CPI portion of the budget totals $625.2 million for fiscal year 2024. The two pie charts on page A1 show the breakout of the budget among the sources of funding and among the broad project classifications. Fifty-four percent of the fiscal year 2024 budget is supported by general obligation bonds, followed by county general funds, known as PEGO, at twenty-eight percent, and state aid at ten percent. Funding for schools and buildings projects together accounts for over half of the total CPI project appropriations. And funding for various roads and parks and recreation projects represent more than 20% of the appropriations. The remaining fiscal year 2024 capital budget represents various community and waterway improvements, community college, refuse disposal, bridges, storm drains, and land preservation projects. Note that sustainability projects, buildings projects, and several other projects are presented in more detail in section B of this analysis. Pages A2 through A5 provide highlights of the types of projects funded in the fiscal year 2024 capital budget. Pages A6 through A7 summarize the total six-year capital program for CPI projects and funding sources. The program totals nearly $1.5 billion and is nearly two-thirds funded by general obligation bonds, with more than half of the bonds earmarked for school projects. Pages A8 through A13 show county debt and debt service. The proposed fiscal year 2024 budget for general fund debt service totals $229.4 million, an increase of $3 million, or 1.3% over the fiscal year 2023 appropriation. The county remains in compliance with the Spending Affordability Committee's Total Debt and Debt Service Guidelines. On page A14, you can see the amount of debt that county voters have authorized, but which the county has not yet issued. There's usually some natural lag time between debt authorization and debt issuance, but we did pose a question here about the county's practice of having this level of authorization on the books. Then, there is an appendix to section A, beginning on page A15, which provides additional details on budgeted fiscal year 2024 capital projects, which the administration took the time to provide, and we greatly appreciate.
We lost your audio.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, did you hear the part about how much we appreciate that the administration took the time to provide additional detail? Very important.
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Turning to section B. For fiscal year 2024, there are numerous initiatives that reflect discretionary, non-recurring use of general funds in the form of projects funded with 169.9% contributions to the capital budget. Available detail of those capital projects are provided, beginning on page B2 of this analysis. And topics for discussion began on page B8. On page B8, we have updated an interesting chart we provided a couple of years ago, showing the net capital budget spending authority that the council approved each year. That's the green background, with the blue bars reflecting actual amounts spent each year. Again, you would expect some lag following approval of budgeted amounts. The graph shows that over the fiscal year 2015 to fiscal year 2018 period, annual spending averaged more than $267 million per year. More recently, from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2022, annual spending has averaged less than $200 million per year. Some questions follow about these spending trends, as well as regarding school construction funding, debt premium, equipment financing, resilience, energy, and sustainability projects, senior center projects, and other projects. Turning to section C, the proposed fiscal year 2024 capital budget for Baltimore County Public Schools totals $211.9 million. Project funding for fiscal year 2024 includes the like-new Tassan High School, major maintenance and roof rehabilitation projects, Delaney High Design Work, and funding towards various other school projects, shown on the top pie chart on page C1. Major school construction projects in process are shown at the top of page C3. Also beginning on page C3 of the analysis, we have identified capital issues specific to BCPS that BCPS and the administration can address. And with that, I will turn the discussion over.
Thank you so very, very much for your thorough analysis. Are any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Great talking, Mark.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify, and my understanding is that the amount for the auction of the Perry Hall Mansion is actually still $250,000. Can the administration confirm that? Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's constant, correct?
I believe so. Yep. And we do have, and Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to kind of walk us through sections A and B, and can turn it over to BCPS, if it pleases the council, or we could field questions.
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do that now, Director Reed?
Yes, sir. And good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to come in to speak to our capital budget from the county side and debt service. I do have my department head colleagues on the call today that can answer specific questions regarding their various projects when we get into them. But I believe there was a couple questions the auditors had specifically that I can begin off addressing. And one is on page A14 here, dealing with our general obligation bonds and our best practices in capital budgeting. And, you know, why we have a large authorization of debt still on the books. And, you know, as this analysis points out, we have a robust capital program. It's one of the largest in county history. And, you know, we do have debt authorization available for future use that has been appropriated in the capital budget and our program. And I think what the chart on A14 shows is a very positive thing. And it demonstrates our practice of using one-time cash surpluses to lessen our debt burden in the future. So, you know, what the chart says is we have about $1.1 billion in funding that was authorized by the voters that we have not needed to use yet and not had to borrow. And again, the funding is not off the books. It has been appropriated in years past. We just have used cash in its place. So again, it's a very good thing. And, you know, going back to our strong fiscal management, when we do see these one-time surpluses in cash, we do apply them to capital projects so we can lessen that debt burden. And therefore, I'd respectfully ask that the, to the council, that our capital funding, this program be maintained as we have programmed and submitted. And, you know, this year, like in past, relies continually on that large infusion of capital PEGO as part of our strategy. Page B8, we talk about capital budgeting and spending, and the auditors had a specific question on our needs and plans, noting how much average annual spending is likely to be over the next few years. We expect to increase capital spending by about $50 to $100 million per year, compared with the past several years. And we'll fund this again primarily through a combination of bonds and PEGO funds. The spending trend has been lower in recent years. And again, this is a good thing, primarily due to the ability of BCPS to use state funds rather than county funds, as well as the prior practice of the county forward funding certain school projects in prior years until the state money was available. And we are no longer doing this practice. And the county expects that the schools request increased funding with the county moving forward through the budget process. In addition, the county has been able to reduce its reliance on bond funding, again, to this significant PEGO commitment. And again, this large commitment and this practice does factor into us being able to maintain our AAA bond rating from all three major rating agencies. And again, we are one of 51 counties in the country to do so. Page B10, we talk about school construction, and we have our folks at BCPS on it. I believe we'll cover a lot of this in the section C. But it talks about our plans to meet MYIPAS funding, including how much additional state aid is anticipated. And we plan to meet the MYIPAS funding recommendations that, from our 15-year plan. And any additional funding, of course, would help meet this goal. Our county MYIPAS is based on a $200 million bond referendum continuing throughout the duration of this plan. And that is what we have factored into our long-term planning. And the state is based on the $40 million through the state's annual capital program and $420 million commitment through the Built to Learn Act. As noted in the auditor's analysis, the Interagency Steering Committee on School Construction, or the IAC, has approved a total of $70.6 million in state school construction funds for the FY24 capital improvement program for Baltimore County. Further, we also have $80 million in pass-through grant funding as a block grant to the local education that will be used, that was last year, to use to accelerate and enhance the BYIPAS. We look at projections and enrollment. The question looking at for development and future anticipated growth. And the answer is yes, we do do that. Enrollment projections are reviewed every year using the state-approved methodology. And enrollment projections define the scope of the work. And there is a series of steps that BCPS works through with the county to work through that. As enrollments increase or change, scopes are modified. And enrollment methodology takes into account the future development and future developments coming online. And our planning department at BCPS vote work together when they look at birth rates, migration, residential development, et cetera. And again, that, again, is continually adjusted each year. And as far as the amounts needed over the next several years to meet the Built to Learn Act, that the funding for Built to Learn is in place, and we do plan to meet that. B11 had a question on debt premium. And we are, this practice was a concern of the Spending Affordability Committee, that our reliance of using debt premium to pay principal and interest. And we're happy to report that with FY24, our budget discontinues this practice of funding debt service costs with bond premium. We received about $4 million in debt premium after our bond sale this winter. And that was applied to general government capital budget projects, not used to pay the principal and interest. And moving forward, we plan to budget the full cost of debt service payments without the reliance of bond premium as we had in the past. So we are addressing that issue. And I believe on B12, the next question deals with equipment financing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matt Carpenter.
Good afternoon, council and esteemed guests. In discussion about the equipment financing package, particularly the 2022, which is the most outstanding one at the moment-wise, much of it is actually, a good chunk has been ordered thus far. Equipment for the fire department, ton of about $37 million is on order. Additionally, landfill equipment for DPW has been ordered. The backbone of the fleet, the medium-duty dumps and so forth are working or in the process the same way. In the coming year, additional orders will be going out, working with the police departments, the additional stuff with utilities and so forth of that nature. So it's a lot of things in flux and a lot of things that will be coming in and be spending out over the course of the next, at least, two years as this package goes. As you want, a lot of stuff is being sort of, it's a little longer in the process of being built and so forth, just because the nature of the supply chains are still all messed up across the board here. The other question involved with equipment financing was regarding ARPA funds. And be quite frank, not much in ARPA funds was actually used in getting equipment. It had been in looking at what we had here. A few vehicles here or there, but primarily, they were not used for equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Chair, on the next section on B14, we had beginning questions about resiliency, energy, and sustainability projects. And I could turn that over to Seth Blumen, if there are anything that he wants to highlight on that, or if there are any questions.
Yes, I can cover the energy and sustainability programs. The comprehensive county plan for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. We're going to be attaining consultation services for electric vehicle supply equipment, which really means charging equipment. Site evaluation and station locations. At which facilities are we going to have them? How to align the infrastructure siding to the vehicle replacement cycle that's going on through vehicle operations and maintenance for the actual electric vehicles? And setting realistic targeted goals. So we're going to be performing site assessments for up to 50 locations, county locations, for potential integration of supply equipment, which may include existing fueling sites, fire stations, and other locations. For the actual charging station equipment, we have $600,000 for charging equipment costs, network costs. All these charges have to be on a network for payments, tracking data analytics, and then design and construction for the integration of these charges and equipment. And so to meet the county's fleet transition goal, we're evaluating additional locations, as I mentioned. Dual-use chargers, meaning public and employee use, and potentially fleet use as well, although we're pursuing chargers only for the fleet at this time as well. And then DC fast chargers, which are the higher kilowatt capacity where they can charge faster, but they're a little bit more expensive. So we're doing a limited number of them. And then electric evaluations and upgrades and design work can vary by site, depending on site conditions and needed improvements. So we'll be looking at each site. And then having flexible funding provides critical county match for the slew of state and federal grants that are out there. They were pursuing numerous grants opportunities for the charging stations. The next item is large facility tune-up, otherwise known as retrocommissioning. It provides evaluations of building systems and investigation of cost-effective measures to reduce energy consumption and improve facility operations. So it's not capital changeouts. It's more of the system adjustments and calibrations and settings of the building automation systems. So retrocommissioning helps ensure that building equipment and systems are integrated so they perform together effectively. They're fine-tuned. They're operating as they're supposed to. Some of the building's systems are pretty old. Some of them are newer. And efficiently to meet current operating requirements and expectations. The retrocommissioning program is designed to achieve electric demand and energy savings in how facilities are operated and maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. We certainly appreciate that analysis. Get started. Let me just, Dr. Williams, you're online?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Well, Dr. Williams, before you get started, let me just take this opportunity to thank you so much for your service to the students of Baltimore County Public Schools. You led BCPS through, you know, like the most troubling times we can ever imagine. You led through pandemic where everybody had to pivot and go virtual. I'm sure that was not easy. Then on top of that, we were hit with a ransomware attack where, to be quite frank, I don't know all the facts, but I certainly felt very, very sorry for you because I felt as though you were caught squarely in the middle between people demanding information, the public and everyone demanding transparency. And I would imagine the FBI telling you to keep your mouth shut and don't say a word. And I'm sure they had to be extremely difficult. And then to lose all the information and all the problems that transpired after that. Educating our kids. So I certainly appreciate your service and thank you for your service. And on the same note, like every season, and things change, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Yarborough. I thank the school system made a most, the school board made a most where we are now in terms of moving us forward in a thoughtful way that won't be so disruptive to the system. So, that said, Dr. Williams, take it away.
Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties over here. I'm going to-
One more remnant of the ransomware attack.
I do want to, I'm working on my video, but I would like to acknowledge we have joining us, our chair of the board, Jane Lichter, and our team, a BCPS team. And if they can just quickly introduce themselves while I work on the technical difficulties over here, that would be great. Dr. Yarborough.
Good afternoon, Mildred Charlie Green, Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon. It's Chris Hartlove, Chief Financial Officer.
Hi, we're Catlift, Director of Budget and Reporting.
Good afternoon, Pete Dixitt, Executive Director of Facilities Management and Strategic Planning.
Good afternoon, Merrill Plaid. I'm the Director of Facilities Construction and Improvement.
I am Jane Lichter. I'm Chair of the Board.
Hello, Jane.
Yep. I thought I, hi, I'm Jane Lichter, Chair of the Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, thanks.
We're still waiting for anyone else to be introduced.
I think Dr. Yarborough is online.
Dr. Williams.
Yeah, I think we've lost Dr. Williams and Dr. Yarborough. Actually, I see Dr. Yarborough one now, so.
Mr. Hartlove, Dr. Williams is rebooting his technology. I think Dr. Yarborough is also having a problem. Ms. Diffler has the PowerPoint. Are you able to get us started, please?
Sure, sure. And I actually have it here as well, if we-
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to try to help troubleshoot on this end.
There we go. Okay.
There we are. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we just thought we would do a very brief overview of our operating budget and where we stand today. We believe it's been a very good budget process and cycle for us on the operating side. So, next slide, please. And I think I may be jumping ahead because I know on the schedule, I think we're talking about capital first. So, but we do, I think Dr. Williams is going to go through the PowerPoint. So we'll start under the area of learning accountability and results. This is where a great deal of our improvements lie. Next slide, please. And as you can see, we have quite a few areas where improvements have been included in the budget. Most of these are utilizing blueprint implementation funds. So we didn't have a lot of choices on these. We believe they're all good things, but they're, for the most part, mandated by the blueprint. First one is the early childhood education expansion of full-day pre-K. We're adding 22 FTE at a cost of $1.2 million. We're converting through a phase-in, pre-K assistance to pre-K paraeducators. We're converting 41 FTE in the first year, and that's a three-year conversion there. In the area of community schools, we're expanding wraparound services to school communities at a total of 91.2 FTE for $8.6 million. We've also added school-based community facilitators and health services support in 56 schools. In the area of career and technology education, we have the workforce development student programs at a total of 6.8. And we've been, I mean, we've been working closely with county staff on this initiative. TSI provide reading and reading specialists and math, school-based resource teachers in TSI schools, a total of 26 FTE. Good news on AP exams. We are, the blueprint funds AP exams for all students enrolled in AP courses. In the past, some, but not all, courses were paid for by us. And now, all classes, all AP courses, all AP exam examinations will be covered by us. And that's good for the students because if they get over a three or above, most colleges will accept those as college credit. So it's a good way for students to save some money on tuition. We're beginning the implementation of the teacher-career ladder. And one of the items there is additional dollars for teachers who have earned their National Board certification. And that's $1 million was added to the budget for that item. And that's $1 million was added to the budget for that item. Next slide, please.
Dr. Hartlove, can I ask a question? I'm happy to see that because that's what we're doing in Hartford County, and I think that's an incentive. Do we have also incentives for Masters plus 30, Masters plus 60?
The way the salary schedules are set up, yes, as you proceed through your education as a teacher, you move up on the salary progression in higher lanes that pay higher dollar amounts.
Okay, thank you.
And also in the area of learning accountability and results, we are very pleased to be able to add 36 ESOL positions for our secondary schools. We're also increasing funding for special education, non-public placements by $1.1 million. And we're also adding, or this is another phase in item where we're adding athletic trainers at schools. We're starting with 13 schools for a total of $1.7 million. Next slide, please. Under expansion, we have the new Northeast Middle School planning in FY '24. It's 1.5 FTE for approximately $200,000. We also have our formulas for assistant principals and support staff in schools where we're adding seven FTE, total of $400,000. And then good news at the watershed charter school where they're expanding to the sixth grade adding three FTE there. Next slide. So under high performing workforce and alignment of human capital, this is where salary increases and those types of things would be captured. We're going to talk about that. Next slide, please. So under salaries, the first thing I'll say is negotiations are ongoing. So what I say is not, I can't get into too many details. To use a football analogy, I believe we're on the one-yard line. I think we're very close to being complete, but we're not complete yet. So we're still kind of in a confidential mode. But the big thing is, is last year, we had significant compensation increases that were partially paid with ongoing dollars and partially paid with one-time dollars. Those salary increases are now fully built into the budget, so they're in our ongoing base budget. We also have funded a step and COLA or equivalent, and I say or equivalent because negotiations are ongoing for all bargaining units and eligible employees. We talked about the National Board Certification Incentive. We also, with this budget, will be able to cover the $15 minimum wage for all of our ASME employees. We haven't completed our negotiations with TABCO, but we know that it will be a significant, it will include a significant increase for starting teacher salaries, which will be good for us to attract the new teachers right out of college. Certainly, TABCO and ESPBC scales will be enhanced and compressed. We also, one of the things that county, the CE and council and budget folks were interested in was beginning to work towards our OPEB funding, which so we've addressed that as well as increases for employee health insurance and pensions. Total of all those items together is $96.4 million, so it's a significant part of our budget. Next slide, please. In order to fund the compensation enhancements, we needed to make some reductions because we didn't have, we didn't have all the funding we need through additional revenue. So we have done some fairly significant reductions, and we tried to use the scalpel as much as we could with this as opposed to, you know, something that was more problematic for the organization. We believe we've prioritized these such that they should have minimal impact to our core instructional program. So we, one of the things that we didn't do during the pandemic, but we're doing with this budget is we're aligning our teacher allocation to our current enrollment. Because we didn't know how the pandemic was ultimately going to impact our enrollment, whether those changes were more permanent or they were going to bounce back quickly, we didn't align or reduce those staffing right away. We're now feeling like the student loss is a new base that we'll build upon, but it is, we have a lower base of students now, slightly lower than from before the pandemic. So that allowed us to reduce some FTE, but not impact the ratio of students to teachers. We've also looked very closely in our central office positions, and this budget includes a reduction of 51 central office positions. We've looked at cell phones stipends, we've reduced those and mileage allowances. We've looked at our salary turnover. We've made some savings there. We've eliminated or in the process of eliminating our substitute teacher service contract. We believe we can do that better. We've done it both in-house and through contracted services. We believe we can do it better in-house and save some money at the same time. We've also looked to align our built-in budgets to the actual expenditure, so we saved 6.5 million there. And then last, but certainly not least, is we looked at our discretionary budgets in central office and reduced those by $1.2 million. So you can see a total of 184.1 FTE and $38.5 million reduced to help fund the compensation. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Mr. Hartlove.
Sure, under operation, and I'll finish up. Oh, there's, it's Dr. Williams.
Yeah.
That's to sub for you, but I don't think I did it as well as you can do it.
No, thank you. Just to add an additional last year, efficiency, we did a budget efficiency for our central office leadership and reorganized central office, and we reduced nine FTEs savings. So in terms of operational excellence, we know the building that infrastructure is important, and the budget does just that. Where we focusing on the support in our schools and around our schools. With that, if you go to the next slide, our budget proposal includes evidence of our commitment to operational excellence specifically. I have come to the council regularly this year to talk about our transportation parent app, and we're adding 1.0 mechanic, looking at replacement vehicles, looking at critical positions FTEs to support our facilities and maintenance. There is an increased bus contractor fee, plus five additional building service workers for our new elementary schools. Also, the contract maintenance, housekeeping, and grounds. And we're going to continue to look at energy management software where there's some savings in what we do when our facilities aren't being used. In terms of information technology, sometimes it's just best to shut things down, start all over again. That's what I had to do. But I would like to say that BCPS passed the Maryland Association of Boards of Educational Mave Security Assessment of BCPS Staff Devices and Network Security performed by the Alliance Security with flying colors. This is an indication of our investment made to our environment, which yields results, and we're grateful and eager to continue moving forward. So this budget puts in place some additional supports around that. More technicians in terms of the IT technicians, looking at our network firewall and software licenses. Still looking at funds to cover inflationary increases in utilities and fuel. We are going to look at additional support in our buildings and our HR clerical and contractual employees. So we're pleased about the results that we're moving in this direction. Next slide. I kind of mentioned this one earlier about the HR support and the clerical support that's needed with the additional contracted employees and looking at recruiting efforts. As I mentioned to the council earlier, our efforts to fill those vacancies are starting year-round with aggressive processes in terms of filling vacancies with job fairs and being a part of many activities inside the county and outside. The last slide really talks about the one-time requests. We've funds to have our startup and moving calls for our new schools. The board authorized us to move forward with a new English Language Arts curriculum. Last night, we're excited about that. This budget puts in place some upgrades to our boardroom technology as well as upgrades to our facility space management software and funds towards the science of reading that is required to match an award from the Maryland League Grant. I will end by saying this year, our process has been ongoing with the collaboration of the Baltimore County Government. So I'm very appreciative of the work with our county executive, our chief administrative officer, the budget team, the ongoing meetings and collaboration, and the work we've done with our board to present this budget. It's been a work in progress, but we're pleased that we have reached this point at this time. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. I trust you were online when I thanked you for your service.
Yes, I did. I did hear that. I did thank us. Thank you so much. Thank you to the council during those troubling times and in many conversations we've had, many ways in which we've answered questions. It has been a wonderful experience, and I think I heard you congratulate Dr. Yarborough. We're pleased and we thank the board for making that decision, and we're here to help with the transition for the last 30 days that I have in this position.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Thank you. Again, congratulations, Dr. Williams. It has been, I've enjoyed working with you. And to Dr. Yarborough, good luck in the future, and I've enjoyed working with you and look forward to working with you more closely. Two questions. In fiscal year 2023, I think we added 33 non-teaching positions such as social workers, nurses, psychologists. And I know that we were struggling to fill those positions. So question one is, how are we doing with the positions that were added in fiscal 2023? And question two relates to the 2024 budget. I see that we're adding additional positions like ESOL positions. What is our expectation of actually filling the positions in the current workforce environment?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. Staffing has been a challenge as we are competing with other systems. In the state of Maryland, we're competing with the same pool. So we have had our staff, our staffing, our staffing specialists and managers to be more aggressive and to go out into non-traditional areas where there are festivals, where there are activities, where we will host a table. And so we still have vacancies for this year. We reduce them each month. And so we've started to really explore different avenues to fill those vacancies. Talking about social workers. A lot of it is our salaries, our benefits. Folks are looking at that. I think we have now a stronger package. Salaries, benefits, and wages are important. That longevity, the partnerships with our universities. We will continue to definitely support our social workers, counselors, PPWs to fill those vacancies. And that process have actually begun early spring and will continue. It's now a year-round process. In terms of our ESOL population, we have a estimated number of students as we start to deploy our students back into their home schools. We're going to continue to monitor that number because there are periods in which there are spikes in our enrollment with ESOL. The official enrollment is the end of October. We sometimes will see an increase December or in January of a fiscal year. And so what we are doing is helping our teachers to know that they are all teachers of literacy, but definitely we are focusing on those teachers with the certification in English Language Learners ESOL to provide that support. So our team has been aggressive all year. We're looking at what we've done this past year to improve our practices. And so we're on a positive trajectory with our hope to fill these vacancies. And then there are times in which we have to have long-term subs. And so that's why we are now taking that back on our responsibility to find those folks who are in our county who are willing to support our students and to train them and support them to fill and be a part of our team BCPS. So I was just saying, it's an ongoing task for us, but definitely looking at our critical areas. And if I may add, Councilman Batoka, I will add that we also have to, we're looking at special ed. We have many of our staff members who are dual-certified, whether it's special ed, whether it's ESOL. And to make sure we're supporting our staff to fill those vacancies and special with the amount of work that comes with following an IEP and supporting students who are receiving special ed services. So those are critical points, special ed, English Language Learners, and those other positions, counselors, PPWs, and social workers.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. How about, are we working with local and universities that may not be local to try to recruit graduates to these positions?
Yes, so a part of our initiative this current year was to look at current interns who are in our buildings. They have to do a certain practicum or a certain number of hours working with a mentor teacher or seasoned teacher professional. And we have been offering open contracts. You know, we have vacancies, so as soon as they are in our building working on their internships and the mentor teacher or professional saying they are, they have been doing a stellar job. And HR has been having conversations and interviews, kind of informal interviews to offer on-the-spot open contracts. So we are the first to grab them. We have been working heavily with our partners around Towson, Stevenson, UMBC, Goucher, all of those neighboring universities to grab these interns and then to offer them open contracts so they will commit with us before they start looking and being tapped from some other school system. So that the dividends have been strong for us to do just that. Get those interns while they are in our building, and if they're doing well, we will offer them a position.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams. And just before I close, I want to do my due diligence and give a shout out to the school board member from the beautiful Second District of Baltimore County, Chair of Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Batoka. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Going once.
Chair, I have one question.
Yes, Councilman Urtell?
I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate at this point, but overly high school is particularly overcrowded. They're getting more trailers. We have an auditorium over there that doesn't work. There's no, the sound system shot and the light spark if we turn on too many lights. Do we have any, is that on anyone's radar that we're we've got a problem there that's getting worse?
So thank you, Councilman Urtell. So that has come to our attention. We'll be happy to follow up specifically with you. I know there's Pete Dixon and Merrill Plaid on the call. We have been working with our school leadership, trying to find out what's going on. We'll be happy to do a follow-up. If you, we can schedule a follow-up with more details.
Okay, all right, great. I appreciate it.
I have two questions as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you done, Councilman Urtell? Okay, Councilman Marks?
Thank you. Closely related, I think, to this because overly high school is overcrowded. Can you give some sense of the status of the Northeast High School study? Can you give some sense of the status of the Northeast High School study?
Mr. Dixon?
So, good afternoon, Chair Jones and Councilman Marks. Good question. As you know, we did the first part of the Northeast High School study, and the recommendation was to replace existing Lockraven High School and enlarge it, build a new, larger high school. Because of the community feedback we have received, we'll do a little more exploring to see if there are other high schools that may solve the problem better. The most ideal solution from the consultant's study point of view was to replace the Northeast High School. So in answer to your question and also question of Councilman Ortell, once we find an acceptable solution, a recommendation from the consultant agreed upon by the community, our board, and all of you, then we'll recommend the corrective action. So the second phase of the study is to study some of the other schools, including Old Lee and Kenwood, to see if that's a better option than Lockraven High School.
Okay, thank you for that. I I think that does definitely need to be a priority over the coming years. And I thank you for your support of the Northeast, New Northeast Middle School site. I also want to make the general observation and applaud the county executive and the school system for the investments in that we're making this year. I teach in Hartford County, and it's a much different story. I'll just leave it at that. And much more contentious budget process. I have one more question, and it's to either Dr. Williams or Dr. Yarborough. Cell phone use. I wanted to know what Baltimore County Public Schools' cellphone policy is, and if we are considering going the other way that jurisdictions are going in terms of limiting cellphone use. I have to tell you, as a teacher, next to discipline, it is the most frustrating thing we deal with. And there have been studies that have shown this is having a real impact on on learning and the psychological, the psychology of our students. So just a question about cellphone use.
We do have a limited usage of cell phones. And this is a conversation that the board and I with the team will have a follow-up. Is the implementation the variance from school to school or from classroom to classroom? And I think that's what's what's causing some concern. And then there's a national concern about just the usage of that, the inappropriate use of the cellphone. Everyone has a cellphone. But but it is the implementation is really what's happening. Classroom to classroom, and and there are some places that there are no issues, and there are some places there are several issues. So our school side has been talking to principals, getting the feedback. And we're be. We followed up with the board. We'll continue to have some conversation. The board may want us to explore and look at different options as we move forward. But fortunately, we have just seen that the use of cell phones is just become a little problematic, but it's it's a variance. It's 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 classroom to classroom, school to school, and there are differences.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your service, Dr. Williams. And again, I thank the school board, you and the county executive for these investments in in teachers and staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Cat?
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. I want to thank you for your service to Baltimore County. I was wondering if you had more gray hair than you did when you started. All kidding. Yeah, just kidding. I I have two questions. First of all, I noticed that there's quite a jump in the amount of money that we're spending on textbooks and supplies. My question is, with the academic issues that our school system is having and most other school systems are having, are those texts, any of that, any of the textbooks or supplies related to trying to get our students caught up to identify the areas where each student is not performing at grade level? And if so, were those textbooks chosen? Or maybe they haven't been chosen by committees of teachers? Or just could you just fill me in on what the goal is with these new textbooks and supplies?
So, yes, there has been an increase of costs because it's not only just textbooks now. There's consumables. Sometimes there's software licenses. So we had a a panel to review our curriculum and provide feedback. And that panel, of course, will include our our teachers to provide the feedback. We've also piloted specifically around the English Language Arts. We were piloting two different curricula. But the cost is 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 a little bit more nowadays because they include all the additional materials that will come that can be used just for the for what you just said, in order to accelerate learning. Or for those who already have it, how do we challenge some of those challenging problems, questions for students? So that's that's in a nutshell why you're starting to see an increase in some of these contracts and funds because it's more than just what we remember years ago, just buying a textbook. And that was another thing that the board, the previous board, wanted us to make sure that students had materials, tangible materials for them to touch. And so we had to have a nice balance of digital material as well as the consumables, what we call consumables. Back in the day, there were workbooks and et cetera. So I I think in a nutshell, that's why you see an increase. And it is just to do that so we can enrich as well as accelerate and also have some opportunities for reteach and reassessment.
Do we have any availability of textbooks and materials for? Let's say you have a child who is should be on the fifth grade reading level, and that individual is on third grade reading level. Do we have materials, textbooks, to send home with this student so that parents can help that child catch up? Do we have resources in the schools to help those children get up to grade level? Are we utilizing volunteers, et cetera?
Yes, so we do have resources. Your question about resources to take home. We have links for parents. We have a link for parents to go and see how they can support their students in a particular grade, in a particular content. The taking home piece is something I probably need to follow up. I know we have links. And and then we offer, we at our elementary school, we have reading specialists. Some schools have math specialists to provide that additional support to our students who may not be performing at grade level. And our principals do flexible groupings. So there are times where they push into the classroom. They'll pull out, and they monitor that growth to help the students reach that particular grade level. And we use a national assessment map. We use we use informal assessments, our curriculum-based assessment, to monitor the growth of students. So to answer all your questions, yes, but I'm not sure I have to follow up if we have enough materials for them to go home for for parents to have. But we have our parent university. We have links tied to how we support students in terms of behaviorally as well as instructionally for families. And there's a great tutorial on that on our webpage for the parent university. And Suhon and team, they do an excellent job of that.
Do we have any funds in the budget to involve teachers over the summer in taking a look at what has happened last year and the year before in regard, well, referring to COVID and how some of our students have fallen behind? Are we going to have groups of teachers who are going to, in essence, discuss the problems that they're having in catching up these kids so that they are on a grade level to figure out what additional resources we're going to need as a school system so that all our students will?
That's a very good question.
Yeah, so all our students will be on, you know, grade level or above grade level. What I I always found that when you get groups of teachers together and they begin to talk about the challenges they have as a group, well, I don't think you'd be surprised at the number of solutions that come forward. When I talk, I always found that to be very productive.
Well, Dr. Williams have told off on that answer. Why don't we get the budget analyst to go over operating budget? And then we can go back into those items because we're sort of drifting into operations.
Yeah, okay, I I have one question about capital then. Mr. Dixon?
You want to go ahead with the capital question?
Yeah, I do. Okay. And I obviously, when we get to the operational, and I looked at the operational budget. I'm sorry, I slipped into that. I don't know what. But but because I'm so concerned about our academic performance. Mr. Dixon, are you there?
Yes, Councilman Cat, I'm here.
Thank you very much. In regard to Delaney High School, has the state of Maryland approved funding for a new Delaney High School? Has our school system presented the needed information for the state to make such a decision? I understand that we've been approved for funding for a renovation or which we're not doing. We're doing the new school. And so are we, you know, what is what is the future look like? When do we have approval of state funding? Or if not, when do you expect our school system to have the adequate materials in to the state so that we can obtain approval for these funds?
So that's a good question. The the board has approved Delaney High School as part of our capital program. In the past, state had approved it for renovation. Subsequent to that, we did an addendum to our feasibility study that they are looking at at this time. From the initial conversation, it appears there's a reason for some optimism there, but we have not gotten anything in writing from them. So that's the part on the state part of the request. The second part is the state funds. The state funds will depend on the outcome of state's decision on what they say about the feasibility study. And earliest, I believe, if they come, would be next year because this year's cycle is complete. And this year's cycle has provided a lot of additional funds for different projects, but Delaney is not one of them. And we continue to provide all the information they have requested and answer all the questions.
Is there? What would the reason be that Delaney seems to be lagging where, let's say, Towson High School, that the funding seems to be that process is further ahead? What what's happened?
So I cannot answer for the state part, but Delaney, I believe, was lower in priority as compared to Towson. There are a lot more needed seats at Towson, so the justification was more strong to get the Towson either renovated or build it like new school there. And we, from our side, are making the equal amount of effort that we have done for Towson or any other school as we are doing for the Delaney.
So I take it from what you're saying then that have you recently been asked for any additional information from the state of Maryland? Or are we now waiting for their response to information that's been sent in?
So the conversation with the state is on a continuing basis. We are in the early part of the design for Delaney, and there is routine conversation from them about the design reviews that our team is participating in. We are answering all the questions. There has been a spec that has been prepared for a new Delaney High School in the hopes that we'll eventually be funded.
Well, I'm a little because I know that, what is it, next week or this week, there'll be a meeting at Delaney regarding the planning for for what? A new school or a renovated school?
So the planning is all for a new school. And the and the purpose of the meeting is, Dr. Williams has been very strong about being transparent in our communication with the community. So this is early stages of concept development. So the architect that we selected is going to present different concept to get the community input. And based on that concept and our educational program, we are going to continue to build upon those concepts, and that'll be the future of our design.
The so I guess you have no idea as to the timeframe for Delaney. I know that the county executive has committed to funding the county's part for a new Delaney. And so it's it's obvious that the state that that, you know, we are seeking adequate funds to to build from the state and between the two to fund a brand-new school. So any idea of what we're talking about time-wise?
So I can give you general timeline for a typical high school. We are in the midst of design. It takes anywhere from twelve to eighteen months to complete the design process, which includes states review at three or four different stages during the development of the design. The scope of work will be decided based on the final design that's approved by state and the community and our school board. So there are different parties that are going to look at our design, approve the design. And that scope of work eventually will decide how long it's going to take to build that school. So series of actions have to take place. The similar process is going on with Towson and has gone on with different schools in the past.
Does the state of Maryland have any renovation plans for Delaney High School? Has our has our school system submitted any renovation plans?
Not renovation plan. We have submitted an educational specification. What it details is the educational program that will be required for that school. And that was done with the help of school administration, with the community, folks involved in there, with teachers and everybody in the school, and our curriculum and instruction folks from V C P S. That has been submitted to state. And we are we are designing like a new New Delaney High School.
So there is no message from the Baltimore County School System that there's any interest in a renovated school? That this school system has made it clear that we want or need a new Delaney? Is that would that be a true statement?
So our county executive, and we are grateful to him, has committed his support for a new Delaney High School. And, um, I believe all of you in county council has supported that. So our plan is to build a new Delaney High School.
Okay, so, uh, the word renovation should not drop that word from anybody's vocabulary when it comes to Delaney. You know, it's, it's, this has been a real struggle. And, uh, I do appreciate the board and the, uh, school system for their support of a, a new Delaney because I could tell you it's desperately needed. And, uh, so I would appreciate, uh, your, uh, if you could keep me up to date on the progress of Delaney. And, uh, you know, I talked with the county executive about it and, uh, I appreciate communication with the, uh, school system as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for asking those questions.
All right. Lauren, let's, uh, go with operating.
Okay, I have Carrie Vivian from my office who will be giving the overview of the school's FY 2024 operating budget.
Good afternoon. The proposed FY 2024 budget for B C P S totals approximately $2.3 billion and reflects an increase of approximately $6.8 million or 0.3% over the FY 2023 adjusted budget. As you recall, Resolution 4522 in November 2022 authorized additional FY 2023 expenditures totaling $34.2 million from B C P S's general fund and food service fund balances for enhanced employee compensation and related costs. The county's general fund budget for B C P S decreases by $32.6 million or 3%, largely due to a reduction in paygo contributions to the capital budget, partially offset by increases in personnel expenses, utilities, IT, contractual bus services and other expenses. Personnel expenses are discussed beginning on page six of the analysis. The special fund or non-county portion of the budget, um, increases by $39.5 million or 3.3%. The special fund increase is supported primarily by increased state aid stemming from the blueprint from Maryland's future, partially offset by a reduction in federal stimulus funding. These funding streams are discussed starting on page 12 of the analysis. The proposed operating budget relies on the use of $46.3 million of B C P S's fund balance, which B C P S projects will title $96.3 million at the start of FY 2024. Please see Exhibits 1 through 3, beginning on page 3 of the analysis for additional details. The proposed budget exceeds the state's maintenance of effort requirement by $71.1 million or 8.2%. The main reason the budget exceeds M O E by so much is related to changes in the M O E calculation in recent years that were meant to address pandemic era enrollment declines. Uh, M O E requires sustained level of per student spending, so as enrollment declines, it is M O E. The analysis notes that while budget reductions are viable up to $71.1 million and turnover has continued to be a source of significant budget savings in recent years due to the staffing challenges. Reductions to the county's appropriation of B C P S could affect labor negotiations which are ongoing. And initially, B C P S is managing its federal stimulus funding, which must be obligated by September 30th, 2024. At that point, next calendar year, stimulus funded initiatives must either be discontinued or integrated into the general fund budget. In this regard, B C P S and O V F have been planning for a gradual shifting of initiatives to B C P S's general fund. Our analysis also identified several topics for discussion and those begin on page 15. The topics include free school breakfast and lunch, transportation, the virtual learning program, the decentralization of the ESOL program and the new, the new agricultural learning lab at Hartford High School. There are three additional topics included for informational purposes only, beginning on page 21. At this point, I'd like to thank Dr. Williams and the B C P S staff for their assistance during the last month or so and turn the meeting back over for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie. We certainly appreciate your analysis and appreciate you hanging in there. All right, Dr. Williams. Any, any additional information on the operating side or did we cover that earlier? I know, I know they did cover a lot of material.
Yeah, we covered it, but I will just respond to Councilman. We caught question every year during the summer, we have training. This year, we're having specific training around our English Language Arts curriculum and our mathematics, particularly Algebra I. Those, those who are teaching Algebra I, as well as we have, uh, special educators, they'll be a part of that. So every year, we, we have training for our staff and then the school's leadership team, they meet during the summer and they look at their data and plan their school progress. They develop their school progress plans with stakeholders, with their teachers. They meet with this, the team when they come back on the first day. And that's to answer and address those students who are doing well. How do we continue to accelerate as well as those students who are not? A lot of that is, is in our, in the programming of courses and the master schedule and who's teaching what and what courses are being offered. I just wanted to circle back to that question that came up that was related to instruction, what happens? And this year, we have a plan for the summer and we're a lot of plan for the year for not only our teachers, but also our administrators, related to instruction, rated to data monitoring, related to standards of excellence. So we, that's a continuation of what we've done this year. Last year.
Thank you. So there, uh, you're good, Councilman Catch. Are any additional questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm good. I, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, when, uh, the state tests take place, I will see, uh, an advancement as far as academic performance. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, Dr. Williams and Dr. Yarber, Yarber know that if there's anything that we can do, the county executive or the council can do to help in order to catch, uh, students up, uh, I'm sure that we, uh, would be welcoming such, uh, uh, proposals. I, um, so yeah, I'll, I'll just leave it at, at that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Catch. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay.
Well, yeah, I do. I'm, I'm sorry, just on a totally different subject. Did I hear, uh, early on in the last segment about the, uh, reducing the administrative staff by 51 people? Did I hear that?
I thought it was nine.
What was it?
Dr. Williams?
We talked about reduction of, uh, central office staff. That was a part of the efficiency review. And also looking at, um, some adjustments, um, in reductions, um, within central office to make sure we have folks, um, supporting our schools. So I don't know. Let me go back and look at the actual number.
I thought you said, I thought it was nine and you mentioned the positions.
Yeah, so, so I talked about what we did this, for this year, a part of the efficiency review. Efficiency study that we partnered with the Baltimore County Government. There was a reduction of non-F T Es, correct?
Okay, and, and the purpose was to get more resources in our schools, correct?
Well, the purpose was to look at the senior level of our system compared to smaller sized systems. And to see if there was a way to consolidate offices, um, and that, and again, to make sure more resources were being placed in our schools. So, um, the theory was, were we comparable to other large systems in this, in, in the country? So there were four or five systems that we were compared to. And there were some recommendations that, that was a savings of $1.7 billion.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, uh, clarification. Are there any additional questions or comments? Well, again, I want to, um, thank you again, Dr. Williams, for your service. We appreciate it very, very much. And, um, this won't be, won't be the last time we'll see you, but I guess don't want to miss an opportunity. And I want to thank, and I want to thank the auditor staff for all their hard work and dedication throughout this process. Just know that, uh, I have been noting, uh, when I've been receiving the packages all times of the night, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. So unless you're, unless you're programming it and running a game on me, I, I can see that you're working extremely hard to get it done. And, uh, we just appreciate it very, very much. So, you're welcome. Uh, on that note, uh, is there anything else, Lauren? Did we, did we miss anything?
No, unless the council has any further questions on some of the capital projects. But other than that, I think a lot was covered.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy your day.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.